Ladies and gentlemen, excuse me. I would like to call to order the October 5th, 2016 meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. Could you join us in a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Before we adopt the agenda, I would like to call to the podium Mr. Stan Crockett.
Madam Chairman, this is the first time I've come to a Planning Commission meeting where I didn't have to read three or four hours' worth of material in preparation first.[54.03][54.03](Laughter).
Stan, thank you for being who you are and what you did for us.
It's my pleasure.
We have something very formal here, but I think that you know that we're kind of an informal group. I would just like to read it and then the commissioners will applaud when we're done. That would be great, and we, the people, will know more about you. Good stuff. So, this is a resolution of appreciation for Stan Crockett, a member of the Frederick County Planning Commission. Whereas Stan Crockett served as a Stonewall District Representative on the Frederick County Planning Commission from the date of his appointment by the Frederick County Board of Supervisors on January 13th, 2010; and whereas Stan Crockett served on various committees and boards during his time on the Planning Commission, such as the Frederick County Sanitation Authority Board and the Economic Development Authority; and whereas Stan Crockett served in the development of various land use studies, most significantly, the Frederick County 2030 Comp Plan, the Sensony Eastern Frederick Urban Area Plan, and the Southern Frederick Area Plan. Whereas during this period of his membership on the Commission, Stan Crockett demonstrated both great insight into issues which faced the Commission in a keen sense of dedication to the betterment of his community; and whereas Stan Crockett possesses the highest devotion to duty and represented the citizens and the county with dignity, dedication, and wisdom; and whereas the members of the Planning Commission wish to express their gratitude to Stan Crockett and to recognize his many years of faithful service. Now therefore, be it resolved that on this fifth day of October 2016, the Frederick County Planning Commission does hereby officially express its thanks to Stan Crockett for his commitment to sound planning, his tireless participation in activities of the Planning Commission and its various subcommittees, and his overall dedication to the county of Frederick.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.[188.20][188.20](Applause).
I just, it was my pleasure to serve the citizens, and I hope that my involvement with the Planning Commission made a positive difference in some way.
It did.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and thanks for coming.
Thank you, Madam.
Mrs. Crockett. Mrs. Crockett.
To adopt our agenda?
Madam Chairman, move for adoption of the agenda.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let's see, we've got two sets of minutes, August 17th and September 7th.
Madam Chairman, move for acceptance of the August 17th and September 7th minutes.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, it's time for our committee reports, and I'm going to ask Mr. Unger to report on the Frederick County Sanitation Authority.
Yes, ma'am. I can't remember the date we met, but anyway. For the month of August, the total customer base for water was 14,863. Sanitary sewer was 14,372. Rainfall for the month was 2.29. Previous month was 6.29, but you'll see a big increase this coming month. It's over six inches. Water production from the Deal Plant was 2 million gallons a day. From the Anderson Plant, it was 1.6 million gallons a day. We purchased 2.5 million gallons a day from the city with a daily average of 6.3, and that's about as high as I've ever seen in Frederick County. We don't usually go over 6 million gallons, but we did this month, this past month. Deal Plant's elevation was 6.49 this month. And last month, it was almost exactly the same. The Anderson Plant was actually raised about six feet, which is good, so we're doing pretty good on our worries. The other main topic we had was multiple family availability fee, and this is something that the Authority's been messing with for over a couple of months now. And they found out that they was going to have to raise the rates for apartments and things like that, and a normal single-family townhouse pays around $17.5 for a hookup fee for water and sewer. And so, we have adjusted the rates for apartments to about $14,000 per unit, which is about 80 percent, and that seemed very fair, so hopefully that'll work out well. There's, I think, three customers that have about two or three years to catch up because they've already got buildings started, so that didn't apply to them, so it will be going up when somebody new comes in and wants to do an apartment or something. I think it's after December, Gary?
If it was anyone who had a site plan approved by the meeting, it was covered. Anyone new, it would be under new rates.
Okay. And that's all we had for sanitation.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you again if you can take a sip of water and keep going as Development Review and Recreation Committee.
I may need some help on some of these. We had, the first thing we had, we met September 22nd, and the first thing we had was indoor recreation for M1. And what we decided to do on that, what we can do there is professional sport clubs, physical fitness facilities, members, sports clubs, recreational sports clubs, and amusement and recreational service. We did decide that if this is done in an M1, that it would have to be under a conditional use permit, and I think we pretty much left it at that, so that'll be coming to the Planning Commission soon. The other thing we had was major site plans, and we found out that Frederick County has been requiring, if you do over 10,000 square feet, you have to have a disturbance permit. And now, we found out that the state requires 5,000 square feet, so we've changed it to five. Isn't that correct, Gary?
No, we had 5,000 for minor site plans or planning, and public works was 10,000, so we moved 10 for a minor application fee.
And the other thing we had was extended stay on hotels, and we tossed that around a good bit, and I think we finally come up with, you can't stay over 30 days continuous until you...
That would be the definition of extended stay.
And that's pretty much all we talked about. We don't have a lot of that in Frederick County. We only have about two places that I can think of that could even be a problem. We also, I think if they have the police department more than four times, that it starts causing a problem for them too, so Candace, you might help me on that. I don't know what else we talked about on that. Okay, yeah, we're going to still work on that some, so, and that's all we have.
Thank you very much. Let's see here. Mr. Dunn? I think you're it.
Madam Chairman, since the last Planning Commission, we've had two Board of Supervisors meetings. On September 14th, the Board approved an outdoor festival permit for Virginia Buildings Association. They approved a proposed amendment to the Frederick County Code, which dealt with the issue of school bus video monitoring system to prevent school buses from, cars from going and passing school buses when their lights are red. They passed conditional permit 05-16 for Burton Real Estate, which was a public garage with body repair. They passed a conditional use permit 716 for Ginger Teats, who had a archery supply store. They passed a new conditional use permit 816 for Crosswood Grocery, which is to put in an expansion of that grocery store and additional fuel. They passed a rezoning 716 on Sensony Road Rentals, which was to rezone two acres of RP property to RA, and that was for the 14th. On September 28th, the Board passed conditional use permit 915 for Connie Ann Ross for a dog kennel, which was presented before this committee. And they passed rezoning 916 for Commonwealth Business Center to rezone 1.2 acres from B3 to B2.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. And Mr. Oates from the Transportation Committee?
Yes, ma'am. We met the morning of September 22nd. The first item on the agenda was a discussion of improvements to the Gainesboro School entrance as the new middle school's been opened. There's a concept that the school board came up with, and the committee looked at it and made some suggestions, and also a suggestion to look at another area, and the school board is continuing to work on that. The main problem is, there's not enough traffic out there to warrant having a stoplight so the buses can get on 522 safely, so they're trying to come up with alternatives that will improve site distance and get the buses out. Another item was the revenue sharing projects, and the big one would be for the remaining section of Jubilee Drive extension over Route 37, and we're putting an application with the developer for additional, I believe, $3.5 million for that program. And then the other is an additional pot of money for the Teva Street extension for the Russell 150 project.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think that concludes our committee reports. This is the time when the citizens may address us regarding any subject other than a public hearing. If so, no so, we'll close the citizen comment portion of the meeting. The first item is a public hearing. It's conditional use permit 11-16 for Jessica Richardson, submitted for a cottage occupation for an in-home daycare. The property is located at 102 Barbados Place, Stevens City, Virginia, and is identified with property identification number 75F-2-73 in the Opeckin Magisterial District. Mr. Klein?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The application is for an in-home daycare at 102 Barbados Place in Stevens City. This is in the Opeckin Magisterial District, and the property is presently zoned RP or residential performance. The current land use is an existing single-family detached residence, and the proposed use is a cottage occupation for an in-home daycare facility. This is an overview of the property. It's off of Ayler Road in the Albin Village subdivision. The property in question is highlighted in black, and it is, again, a single-family detached home. It does have a fenced backyard and a driveway that can accommodate up to four vehicles. The subject property, again, is located in the Albin Village subdivision on a cul-de-sac, Barbados Place, and it's surrounded by other, like, single-family detached homes. The in-home daycare facility has currently been in operation for two months within the principal residence, and the owner currently cares for nine children. This request is for up to 12 children. Licensed in-home daycare facility is a permitted use in, through a cottage occupation in the RP or Residential Performance District through an approved conditional use permit. An in-home daycare facility is defined by the zoning ordinance as a facility in which more than five children, not including those children related to the people who maintain the facility, are received for care, protection, and guidance during part of a 24-hour day. The applicant is designated to drop off and pick up in the driveway and is provided a fenced outdoor play area in the rear of the property. A sketch plan was included with your application materials. The drop-up and pick-up of children is staggered throughout the morning and evening, and that should prevent any queuing of traffic along Barbados Place. Should the Planning Commission find this use to be appropriate, staff has recommended the following conditions: All review agency comments shall keep be complied with at all times. The hours of operation shall be permitted from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. The applicant shall satisfy the licensing requirements of the Virginia Department of Social Services and the County of Frederick, and one small cottage occupation sign is permitted. Other than those children residing on the property, there shall be no more than 12 children being cared for at any given time, and other than the persons residing on the property, there should be no more than one additional employee. Any expansion or modification of this use will require a new conditional use permit. The applicant, Jessica Richardson, is here this evening if you have any questions, and to date, staff has not received any comments or complaints from adjacent property owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Drew?
Yeah, a quick question on the sign. Is that something we've done in the past when these, or daycare's been inside of a subdivision? Because I know a lot of the subdivisions don't allow signs as part of their covenants and...
We typically do permit cottage occupation signs with, through a conditional use permit application. Any enforcement of the HOA covenants is a private matter between the homeowner and their HOA, and she can speak to if there's an HOA for the Albin Village.
Any other questions?
I guess just one. About the sign again, it says small and doesn't, I mean, even if it's allowed, what is, you know, how big is small?
I believe it's 12 square feet and four feet tall. Correct.
All right? Everybody okay? Yes, Mr. Dunlap?
I understand there's nine children there nowadays. Are they currently operating under a conditional permit, or is this to correct the situation?
This is to come into compliance with the county's requirements for a business license. They also would be required to get licensing through the state of Virginia, which has their own process and does a site inspection as well, so as long as they're meeting all those standards, they'll have, obviously, the conditional use permit from the county.
Anybody else? Anyone like to ask the, our candidate here for any questions for her? Do you have any questions? Would you like to speak to us? Come on. If you'll give us your name and Magisterial District, please.
So, my name is Jessica Richardson, and I'm in the Opeckin, Opeckin, right? Okay. Sorry, this is my first time doing anything like this. So, I've been open for two months. I have an in-home daycare called The Learning Tree. We have nine children, and actually, my sister is in with me. She's involved with me to be able to assist, you know, care for the nine children. And I guess that's it. I'm not sure if there's anything.
Do you have any information on the sign issue?
Oh, the sign issue? So, the HOA, we have no issues with the sign. It's very small. They've not said anything to me. I don't see anything in our booklet. You know, we do have an HOA, but there's nothing in there that says I can't have it, so.
Anybody else have a question, or? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this request for a conditional use permit? Well, seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Madam Chairman, if I may just take a moment here and clarify one item?
Yes.
And that's the, the sign that's associated with a cottage occupation is four square feet in size, so that's already allowed by ordinance. If we include it as a condition, then of course, that clarifies, secures the fact that they can have a cottage occupation sign with this business. But again, a cottage occupation sign is four square feet.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Well, any further comments? Any thoughts?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the conditional use permit number 11-16 for Jessica Richardson.
Second.
Are we going to do it with the four-square-feet sign instead of small?
I think that's the ordinance requirement.
Okay.
We're fine.
He's correct. The condition only states that it's a small cottage occupation sign.
Mr. Unger, would you like to vote?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Klein, yes.
Oates, yes.
Malden, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Moan, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on the 26th of October. Thank you very much. Okie do. Our second item is also a public hearing item. It's rezoning 10-16 for Miller Hardware, submitted by Greenway Engineering to rezone 0.63 acres of a 6.52-acre parcel from the RP Residential Performance District to the B2 General Business District with proffers. The property is located on the north side of Fairfax Pike, Route 277, approximately 900 feet east of Oriole Drive, Route 1141, in the Opeckin Magisterial District, and is identified by property identification number 86-A111. Mrs. Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. As you stated, this is an application to rezone 0.63 acres of a 6.52-acre parcel from the RP District to the B2 District with proffers. Now, note that 0.63-acre property is currently part of the Shenandoah Presbyterian Church, and then the applicant is also Miller Hardware, which is the adjacent property owner. If I can direct you to the screen to your left, the church property is outlined in black. That's the entire six-plus-acre property. As you can see on this picture provided by the applicant, that hatched area is the subject piece being rezoned. Now, this parcel is located within the Sewer Water Service Area and the Urban Development Area, and it's also depicted in the 2030 Comprehensive Plan with an urban center land use designation for that entire area. Therefore, the requested B2 zoning is generally consistent with the goals of the Comprehensive Plan. With this rezoning request, the applicant has proffered a number of things. First, they've proffered to restrict the use of the area to accessory outdoor storage, accessory structures, stormwater management, utilities, or buffers. They've stated that access to the site will be from the Miller Hardware property. They will also have a boundary line adjustment process completed to adjust that 0.6 acres into the Miller Hardware property within 30 days of rezoning approval, and they've also proffered a monetary contribution in the amount of $800. So tonight, following the public hearing, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Commission to forward to the Board. I'll be glad to take questions, and Mr. Evan Wyatt is here on behalf of the application.
Thank you. Mrs. Perkins? Thank you. Mr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I'm Evan Wyatt with Greenway Engineering. We're representing Miller Hardware with the request this evening. The only things I wanted to mention, in addition to the staff report Candace gave, the purpose of the acquisition of the property is to allow for Miller Hardware to do a building expansion in this portion of their property, which is currently used for outdoor storage of equipment and materials, and that area would then be relocated over into the newly zoned area that would be adjusted into the parcel. Obviously, the Millers have been working with the adjoining church on this. There is a legal agreement that's been cobbled together and is acceptable to both parties, and as part and parcel of that, even though it's not really mentioned in the rezoning nor is it really part of the rezoning process, there will be a common shared buffer and screening easement between both properties, so everybody's aware of the ordinance requirements that will be forthcoming once the property's owned. The only other thing I wanted to mention, if you recall from the impact analysis statement, we based the impacts for the rezoning based on a square footage addition of about 8,000 square feet. Mayor may not be that large, but so, when we figured out the monetary contribution that was being offered for fire and rescue, we assumed a worst-case scenario of 8,000 square feet, and so that's why we did the lump sum of 800 instead of the 10 cents per square foot, which is typically what's done. Other than that, I'll be happy to answer any questions of the Commission.
Questions, Mr. Wyatt? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this rezoning for Miller Hardware? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Any comments on this? Any thoughts? None?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the rezoning of number 10-16 for Miller's Hardware.
Second.
Second. Okay. Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes.
Dunlap, yes.
Kenny, yes.
Malden, yes.
Oates, yes.
Klein, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Unger, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on the 26th of October. Okay. Our next item is an information discussion item. It's right-of-way widths for family lot subdivisions. Am I on the right? Discussions on revisions to the subdivision ordinance to reduce the right-of-way width mandatory to create a family lot subdivision per the Code of Virginia. Mrs. Perkins?
Again, thank you. This ordinance amendment is really just a cleanup exercise to bring our code in conformance with the Code of Virginia. Currently, our code requires a 50-foot right-of-way in order to create a family lot division. Code of Virginia states that the maximum allowed to be required is a 20-foot easement, so we've drafted amendment to the subdivision ordinance to reduce that from the 50 to 20 to bring the ordinance in conformance with the state code. So, the DRC had discussed this at their August meeting. They did recommend approval and sent it forward to the Planning Commission for discussion. So, tonight, we're seeking comments from the Commission to forward to the Board. Glad to take questions.
Comments from Mrs. Perkins? Can't fight Rome. Okay. And our next item is also an information discussion item, is discontinuance of nonconforming uses. Discussion on revisions to the zoning ordinance to increase the timeframe. Nonconforming use can be discontinued before it is deemed abandoned by, per the Code of Virginia. Mrs. Perkins?
Thank you. This is another cleanup exercise regarding state code language. It's an amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding the discontinuance of nonconforming uses. Currently, our ordinance states that if a nonconforming use is discontinued for a period exceeding one year, that use is deemed abandoned, and it goes away. The Code of Virginia has an allowance for two years, so we're bringing this amendment forward to change our ordinance from the one-year to the two-year to be consistent with the Code of Virginia. So, again, this was a DRC discussion in August. They agreed with the changes, sent it forward to the Planning Commission. Tonight, we're seeking comments from the Planning Commission to forward to the Board.
Any comments for Mrs. Perkins to take to the Board? Not a word was said.
Thank you.
The next item is an information discussion item also. It's removal of motorcycle repair in the B2 District. Discussion on revisions to the zoning ordinance to eliminate the motorcycle repair in the B2 Business District and allow to use, and allow this use in B3, M1, and M2 districts. Mrs. Perkins?
Again, thank you. This is an amendment to the zoning ordinance to remove motorcycle repair from the B2 District. Currently, that use is allowed in the B2 and the B3 districts. It's really to bring it more in line with automobile repair, which is allowed in the B3, M1, and M2 districts. So, what this amendment would do would strike it from the B2 districts. It would leave it in the B3 district, district where it's currently allowed, and it would also add it into the M1 and M2 districts. It's really just a cleanup exercise to bring it more in line with auto repair, which is a similar use. So, this was discussed by the DRC at their August meeting. There was no changes. It was sent forward to the Commission. So, again, we're seeking comments from the Commission to forward to the Board.
Yes, Mr. Moan?
I just have a question. What was the origin of this? I mean, had there been some issues or concerns about this in commercial centers or something?
It resulted from a zoning violation regarding an auto, an actual auto repair place that had originally been a motorcycle repair shop. It illegally transitioned to another use, so we had to work with that owner, get them to a proper zoning, so it seemed like a good idea to, a good time to clean it up so it doesn't happen again, because it wasn't a commercial strip center.
Makes sense.
Where it's not really a proper place for that type of use.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Yes, Candace, just for the record, we have two motorcycle facilities now that are in a B2 zone. Just for the record, as long as they have sales, they can service those motorcycles?
Correct. Their primary use is sales. So, the accessory use of repair is a permitted accessory use. It's the same as automobile sales with an accessory, because we have a lot of, obviously, auto dealerships that are B2, but you can't do auto repair in the B2, but they have a large, you know, repair business. So, it would be the same, where as long as their primary use is sales, they can do accessory repair.
Okay.
Thoughts? I think you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're at the end of the agenda. I know that Mike Ruddi would like to share with us a special thing.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. It's a little unusual, but what we wanted to do here this month at this Planning Commission meeting was to recognize a couple of things. The first thing being that the American Planning Association recognizes October as National Community Planning Month, and so that recognition gave us an opportunity, if you will, as that theme this year is civic engagement. engagement and participation, to really come in front of the Planning Commission, recognize not only you as a planning commission, but all of those other citizens that engage multiple times throughout the year on various county boards and committees, from the Board of Supervisors, Planning Commission, Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee, Development and Regulations Committee, Historic Resources, Board of Zoning Appeals, I think I covered them all now, Conservation Easement Authority, Agricultural District Advisory Committee, to name the ones that we, of course, deal with. So, you know, while planning is important for the future of the community, the future growth of the community, to balance all of those things that you strive to do every meeting that you come to and those many other meetings that you attend, we just thought that this was a good opportunity to recognize you, Planning Commissioners, and all of the time and effort that you do put into it, in line, again, with what is being recognized nationally and throughout the state as Planning Month. So, with that, from the Planning Department, thank you for all of your time and effort.
Thank you very much. We will be having a meeting on the 19th, so prepare for that. And we are sort of at the end of the meeting.
Madam Chairman, at the last Board of Supervisors meeting, the CPBA, the amendments were brought up, and the Board voted to send all four of those forward for study. Usually, at this time of year when that's done, it means that Comp Plan Committee, we start crafting these to get adopted into the comp plan. Of course, ultimately, it's up to the Board in the end if they want to adopt that. Speaking to a few supervisors in the last week, it sounds like that really wasn't what they were looking for. They were looking for additional information before they made up their minds. So, I guess if we can get consensus, the Planning Commission, to request from the Board of Supervisors exactly what they're looking for when they say we want additional study, that they want us to start proceeding with the comp plan, or if they're just looking for, I guess, a recommendation from us or some other information to make their decision. Because with four comp plan amendments, that's a lot of work for us, and we want to make sure that we're doing what they're asking.
Yeah. I think, do we have any other clues as to what we might want to do?
I would just like to say, if we can get consensus, just request from the Board, what do they want? Before we just jump into a study thinking they want one thing and actually, they are looking for something else.
Okay.
Just clarity.
Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Sure.
On behalf of the Board, Mr. Oates, we'll be glad to do that. So, we'll go into the specifics on what we're looking for, those that voted in favor of this, what they're looking for, and get back to you.
That'd be great. One of the things that, you know, I think about is the fact that how much is already being answered by our existing comp plan, by some of those plan amendments that come in. So, that certainly would be on the list. What was intended? What do we have currently?
All right. Madam Chairman, Mr. Oates, in those that were voting in favor of the various projects, most of them seem to indicate that they wanted to have a further study on what would occur, what might occur, to get a parameter. So, I'll be glad to speak to those Board members individually and get back to this committee, this Planning Commission, with some specifics.
Okay.
Does that meet your needs, sir?
Okay. Are you, is it coming back to the Planning Commission or to the Comp Plan Committee?
I guess that would be a discretion of the Board is what they want.
Okay.
I'll get back to you in two weeks with some more specific information.
Thank you very much. Anything else? You okay? Everybody okay? Second? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you.